Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Okay, we have a forum, so I will call the meeting to order of the special meeting of the Bellas Falls Village trustees. It is now 5:00 on May 19th, and my apologies for any errors that you were seeing on the website. We're still working through the nuts and bolts, doing this on a regular basis, getting it onto the new website, which is slightly different and somehow confusing to many people, including myself. But we'll get there. 5:00 PM, and let's see, I called me to order any additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and repressing matters that will require ratification at a future meeting. Have we anything? Does it sound like we do?
Just nothing.
I, oh, thank you. Approve the minutes? Oh, I'm sorry, we have no minutes to approve. We'll do them at the regular meeting when that happens in June. Public comment? Anyone? I have to look around.
Please, pardon me.
Right, did you have, and you have too? Okay, so Bob, did you have comments?
Yeah. Can I do this without offending anybody?
Certainly.
We're sitting more than six feet away from each other, right?
I hope so, I'm trying.
That's why I'm at the ready, so that...
Okay. I am here and I'm planning to go to sleep with the very same concern. I've paid enough inquiries that I know what I saw on Facebook is fundamentally accurate. Three town employees want to go for a quarter of a century of experience. Was told, "Thank you, but we can't do it right now." If the door let me open wide, we have to... This causes me some problem. Number one, I disagree with the action, and I realize if we can debate that all day, but I really have a problem with this, how it was done. Was this done openly? Were the all trustees, was there an action?
Uh, this was three town employees, Bob, just understand that. We had no control over that.
Okay, I was told you were part of the decision and you were involved.
They are town employees, so no.
No.
No active participation at all.
Okay, well, still want you to hear me. It applies, may not apply to this, it applies to the future.
Thanks.
I don't like backroom dealings. I've lived in Bellas Falls since 1995. I may have seen more than one or two. That's not what I hope government is about these days. That's not what I hope it's about going forward. And so my major critique is I wish that you would think that you personally, you institutionally, some thought would go into whether you really want to manage or form a government. It's not you, it's we. I don't think we do. You can't keep a manager wide. I think there's a cycle that goes on, very predictable cycle. Manager can't do his or her job because they aren't allowed to do their job. They're told what to do. No one's gonna win today, no way. I guess I will hold, the last person was a town hall employee, right? Two people I knew, two of the three I knew, one of them I didn't, and he was not, the one male, he was not a village person, is that correct, employee?
None of them were village.
None of them were village, okay. Perhaps I said enough with this board at this moment. I, uh, I'm very concerned, and I can assure you, I'm not gonna assure anybody of anything. I personally vote all the time, and I don't like the feeling that I'm what's going on. Thank you for your time, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Bob. Yeah, uh, could you say your name for the record?
Gina.
Last name?
DeCambo.
Thank you. The secretary, the clerk has to take that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
Um, I don't know where to bring it, who to bring it to. Um, I've been a registered village voter, um, for 19 years now. When I first moved there, we had a little bit of a drug problem, wasn't too too bad. Um, I now live on Green Street, where I am surrounded by three, not one, but three houses that sell drugs, within a hundred and fifty foot vicinity of my home where children play. This past summer, in the Cordera and Cota parking lot, we found drug needles, which is where a lot of our kids play. Then when I, um, when we had Caesar, when these three houses did see him, he did make a difference, he makes a difference with his presence, they see him, and they tend to walk away. It gets to the point now where the neighborhood is joking that they're selling Girl Scout coupons, because the windows go up and the drugs exchange hands, and then they walk away. I do know that multiple officers and their own POVs have been out there trying to watch what is happening, um, but they're good at what they do, except they're not good enough because I can stand on my own front porch and I can watch it day, night, weekend, doesn't make a difference. Um, we have a lot of kids in our neighborhood, and it's very, very concerning. Um, I would like to find a way to save Caesar, to bring him back, to do the job that he's been doing. I personally know just from three articles I saw in the paper, that he got about $100,000 off the streets, just in three, um, people being pulled over or arrested. Um, so I'm a little confused of why the village voters like myself didn't get the option to keep Caesar and fight for our village, um, and our village children. It's our kids that are gonna die, it's our kids that have died, um, it's our family members, and it's getting to be too much, and I'd like to do something about it. The PD and I have talked, um, on how to best handle it, and now I'm bringing it to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
And, let's see, Miss, did anyone else have any comment?
Yes, Jim Mitchell. Jim Mitchell.
Go ahead.
Hi. I'm concerned about the drugs too, and irrespective of Caesar or not, the drugs have been there for a long time. And Caesar allowed these drugs on Barker Street, you know what I'm talking about. You know, so don't say the dog did a good job when, when the boss allowed these drugs to be sold in this village. They knew damn well that they were drugs being sold on Fort Barker Street, Green Street, right here on Canal Street, my God, I have free drug houses. Why don't they do something about that? We hear how great the dog is, yeah, I love the dog, I didn't, I do not think that our chief did a good job for 14 years, that's why we have a proliferation of drugs. Things can't come soon enough. Enough with this shirt thing, let's get it, chief is gonna clean this town up. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Um, it looks like that's everyone publicly. Therefore, we will move on to the agenda, um, which concerns, considers just one particular item, which is the discussion of before, during, and after the performance of the Bellas Falls Police Department in connection with the funeral parade of 5:13, 2020. I want to, I put it into four different categories, I wanted to make sure we cover each one intently and don't confuse on what actually happened. Um, A, we'd like to know who issued the permit. I believe, um, who was the person to speak to about that? Would that be you, Shannon, Officer Bemis?
I can take that. Um, we were not issuing permits for birthday parties, or parades, or things of that nature at the time, because of the pandemic, so we were simply doing them on request. We've been doing kids' birthdays and things of that nature for, since the pandemic hit. So we did not issue a permit.
There was no permit? Okay, therefore, there was no public advance notice? Therefore, who was approached concerning this issue?
The police department had fired, the fire permit was approached, asked for it to be, and the police department then got involved and issued it.
Okay.
We became, I became aware of it on Tuesday, um, the day before the event happened. We had received some information that, uh, that was on Facebook, uh, that it was going to happen, we had been asked if we wanted, uh, coordinate with them on the event, and we agreed that we would. Uh, we saw some information there also, that there would be, uh, burnouts, uh, and things like, something like that. We made contact with the, uh, family, uh, and told them that that absolutely could not happen, uh, that we would not participate, and that we could shut it down if it did happen. Uh, and the organizers, family members that did that, agreed with that, and said that no, none of that would be happening, uh, at the time.
That was prior to the parade?
That was the day prior to it, yes.
Okay, did any of the trustees have any other comments on these two items? Advance notice and permit not issued?
I would be curious who's, who spoke to the family prior to that? Well, they...
I, I think the 12th was the date that, that...
That's when you said that.
Then I became aware of it, I believe that's the date that the family contacted, uh, the office.
It had already been, by the 8th, it had already been advertised.
Well, on social media?
And some, and within that, it was explaining that they were going to be escorted, so somebody had spoken, someone there was...
They had asked the fire permit to do, to chaperone, or, you know, go with the parade as they've been doing for other events since the pandemic.
Okay, so the fire department, the 12th, and then the 3rd?
I can't guarantee that Sean left, actually, I'm pretty sure he should be back.
I, but I know that I knew about it on the 12th, and then I'd heard that there was, uh, thing, and I didn't see the social media, but I had heard that, and that's when we made the call to the organizers, the family members, and said that this could not happen, and this could not, um, you know, we would not participate in that, and we would, and we would shut it down if that was going to happen. And they assured us that it would not and was not going to happen.
Anyone else on these two items? Stefan, James, did you have anything on that?
No, no. Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Mitchell?
The family posted this on my page, on the 11th, both parties posted it. I sent it to Chief Bemis and said, "They're gonna be doing this and this." That was on the 11th, two days before the procession. So, somebody is not telling you the truth.
Okay, so I want to clear it up with Jonathan, you meant, it wasn't really advertised, it was, but it posted on social media?
Yeah.
Right, so, just so we're clear, nobody paid for an ad in favor, this is social media post. Okay, um, so then we get, if this is what we have so far, this is, gets us to what actually occurred during the parade. Um, based upon videos that I was sent and have seen, it appears to me that the actions about what you're speaking were performed in front of at least one police officer in the Hattie Green parking lot, and yet the parade proceeded.
The, uh, the information that I have, uh, and I've talked to the officers, I've talked to some of the witnesses to this, uh, they arrived at the funeral home in the, in the area of 6 o'clock, when the parade was going to take off.
The funeral home was not involved in that, right?
No, but it was, it was, yes, it was the Hattie Green parking lot, yes. Um, the, uh, the officers arrived there at 6 o'clock. There were a lot of vehicles in that area when the officers arrived. They spoke to the people that were supposedly organizing it, they spoke to some of the people that were there. Uh, one officer, uh, then left to go to the Acton Street and School Street intersection, uh, to direct traffic there. One officer went to the, um, Red Light Hill intersection to direct traffic there. One officer was going to lead the procession. The, there was, to my knowledge, there was no, um, spinning out, oil wheels burning at that time at the parade, at the start of the parade. There were, the vehicle proceeded, then there was a fire truck, and then other vehicles followed behind that. Um, but everybody that I have talked to, PD says there was no, uh, was no burnouts, anything like that, at the start of the parade.
Well, if I may?
Yep.
I've had some individuals complain to me about it. Received a video. The video clearly showed the Bellas Falls Police Cruiser in the Hattie Green parking lot, parked there in the Thanksgiving.
Yes, I, if I can keep, if I can keep going, I think that, and certainly if I don't get it all in, ask me and I'll, I'll let you know. Um, the parade proceeded, the lead car did not know of any, uh, of these burnouts that were occurring, um, behind him. The, uh, the, uh, like I said, I had an estimate of maybe 50 vehicles involved, trucks, commercial vehicles, cars, um, were in this parade. Uh, it appears that there was burnouts, uh, in the area of PKs, uh, if you look at the road, there are certainly burnouts there. There were then burnouts on Acton Street. The officer at, um, Acton Street and School Street, uh, saw, uh, some of the going on after the front of the parade had passed. He attempted to, there were, there were people on the sidewalks and other cars coming up to the direction. He tried to keep those separate and tried to speak to the, to the vehicles that were coming down. He had seen that prior to that, north of that intersection, uh, acting badly, driving badly, starving car vehicles, which is the legal term for it. He radioed in to the others that this was happening. Uh, the procession proceeded, um, got back to the, to the Hattie Green Park. The cruiser that you see in there were pulled in there, the other vehicles were pulling in there, some, they say about half of the vehicles in the, in the procession, uh, had came back to that location, others had broken off once the procession had, uh, made Red Light Hill and had, uh, stepped back to the Hattie Green Park, parking lot. Um, that's when the issues arose. The officer that they are called for backup, uh, asked the other officers to get there when they can, uh, because there were a group of people there, um, running out, uh, making, in disorderly and destructive in their vehicles going through there. Uh, we had one officer there at the beginning, we then got a second officer there, the one from the School Street intersection got there, and then the other officer was able to get there. Uh, they stopped one vehicle at night, they, they broke up the group, there was a group of people gathered there, um, out of their vehicles, they broke that up. Um, the people that they were interacting with were not, uh, cooperative, or happy to be there with them, um, or to be told, "You cannot do this, you need to leave." Right. Uh, and they broke it up from there. So yes, there was a cruiser there, there was one officer there, he was doing what he could until the other officer could. Uh, we issued one ticket that night, it was the only vehicle, uh, that had been doing that, that we could, uh, that we could stop, uh, at that point in time. After reviewing videos, uh, we have at least three others that we have issued tickets to, um, that we have mailed the tickets to. We have, uh, two other vehicles that we have not been able to identify the, the driver and the plate number, but we're still looking at the videos that are coming in and going through it. It, uh, it, it was not a good situation, nobody wanted this to happen, it was a disrespect to the young man, uh, that died in a tragic circumstance.
Anyone else in the committee board that need a comment on this?
And, well, I also feel it's a disrespect to our roads.
Absolutely.
You know, they were horrible.
Yes.
And there's basically nothing we can do to fix it, to get rid of that, unless we chip seal again to cover over it.
It, it was a bad situation, if, if you could have, we would have, um... We would have absolutely prevented it. If we had called in secret raid officers that, you know, were not on a post and not leading the event, we may have been able to have stopped it and been heavy-handed. Um, the, the whole incentive, the situation of how the young man died, um... We certainly did not want this, try this, approve of this, we certainly did not. Right. Uh, and we are still investigating it to find out the people involved.
I didn't even say it was a very nice tribute.
No, it was, it wasn't.
And, yes, John?
I don't even know where to begin, on the amount of things that didn't happen right, people that didn't do their job. And first off, I would go through, and I would actually look at the video, because there's multiple videos that I've seen that people have sent me, that show two police cruisers side by side, one with the door open while this is going on. Whether it was before or after, it doesn't matter. It was, there was no plan, wasn't authorized, it wasn't a funeral procession, because the definition of funeral, movement of a body from a memorial service place to turn. So, to begin with, the use of personnel and equipment wasn't even properly authorized or, or dealt with, there was no, no plan. Obviously, there was plenty of notice about what was gonna happen, and no action by the police department at that time to do it. And I find it really hard to believe that whoever was leading the parade couldn't hear what was going on 200 yards behind, and put a stop to it then. Or when it was happening at intersection of school and Acton Street, that it wasn't stopped then, or that it wasn't addressed when it was back at the Hattie Green parking lot, which is actually a town road, not a parking lot, it's PH, they have a name, that it wasn't converged on and dealt with then. Because the result of that is what you see in the parking lot now, and what you see around town. The other result of that was, I had to, was walking my dog, several of the cars drag racing down School Street, I mean, they were doing, they came out lined up and drag raced side by side down School Street. There was a set of a car, and then 40 seconds later, there's a, instead of trucks first and then cars. And... I don't know who, who the officer charged at the time, but no leadership at that point from that person, I would assume, uh, because this all happened, and it wasn't until the complaints started coming in the next day from residents about the actions, uh, no, people not stopping for crosswalks, uh, being cut off at stop signs, because, you know, the noise, the, the tire smoke, um, and now we're in a situation where there's, there's no positive outcome coming at, right? There, because there's no situation that resolves what's going on in a manner that's going to be acceptable to everyone. So my question is, who takes responsibility? And what are we doing looking forward to? Because this is just another black eye of the police department, right?
Certainly, uh, we have, we have put a hiatus on any, even birthday parades that were not scheduled, we did a couple, uh, on, on last Friday, uh, that were scheduled, um, but we've stopped that absolutely, it could have been planned out better, it shouldn't have been planned out better, um, and we, we understand that. And something like this will not be going on again without, uh, certainly our participation, uh, from the very beginning, and understanding that this just can't happen, that this situation can't happen, and more officers should have probably been there. Although that to include calling them in and adding...
Well, no, first, it should have been a, it's been a coordinated parade, and within the parade permit, the, the detail, the guidelines are discussed, that outlines the plan for what is needed and for what is going to cost, that putting officers in to be able to do that.
That's right.
Right?
It gives guidance so that people don't have the opportunity for all that.
There's a reason why we have these things.
In, of the 50 cars, we have, and we've looked at a lot of videos, we have, uh, found, um, six that we have seen that have been, um, breaking the law, of, of the many that were there. Um, and we are trying to deal with that, and we were trying to deal with it that night, did stop cars, the officers at the scene at the Hattie Green were trying to break up and stop people from doing what they were doing, the groups that were there, uh, that were not, like I said, not pleasant to, or cooperative with us.
Well, it's disturbing when you get people to contact you and say, "Don't you have any more, any police anymore in that, in your village?" I've been, I was contacted from people from Wolfville, Charleston, uh, Westminster, Rafflin, and that's the impression they get, also people talking about the drag racing. Uh, fortunately, it didn't turn out worse, meaning if there was a kid playing on that street that it ran over, or a car had rolled over and then, uh, a fatality or an injury, um, it doesn't put us in the best of the blood.
Doesn't put any, it's, well, absolutely. And, I mean, like I said, this was no way to harm a young, a young man that, that's what I'm saying.
It doesn't, to, to me, it doesn't make any sense that even in the pandemic, we stopped issuing permits. Permits are available on the website, they're available to, to send over to the, or to email a request, um, to town hall personnel, there isn't any reason why we stopped doing it. Reality is, the, the rules required to perform a proper parade, or a permit to have a funeral procession, or whatever, if the, if that's what they wanted to do, we would have given them some guidance, so we wouldn't, so give them a preemptive strike, don't let them, let them think that they can just do whatever. On Facebook, there was a lot of social media, it was talked about way back, I think from the 8th or whatever, that you can make as much noise as you want with your vehicles, you can be as loud as you want, but that's not the reality, that's not true in our community, and it's disrespectful to everyone who faced accidents from the things that happened. The use of our, the abuse of our police department, um, dealing with this, and, um, and on the other side, I would said, "As soon as you see that happen, I'm gonna stop the parade, we're done, we're gone." We expect our police department to be able to control them, and I don't know at what, and now because of being told that the sequence of events and what happened when may not have been something that the police were aware of at the beginning of the parade, I, I can't say for sure if you could have stopped it at the very beginning, but as soon as it's seen, and going down the hill, you see someone's white smoke flowing, someone can't not see that, or smell that, or hear that in a police crewing, I just, I just do not believe that part. So I, I'm, I'm very upset at how this whole thing happened. Going forward, I would say we should never, ever issue any parade forms of any kind without a permit, and that this clearly understood, the behavior is a...
Do you find enough to eat?
Excuse me?
Oh, good. So that was fun.
Use that person, please. Um, but, as far as moving forward, it's just a black eye for the community, it's a black eye for our police department, and since that...
Yeah, I've been doing a little more of that myself.
Since that has happened, I have had more than three people going, stopping, actually stopping in front of my house, screeching out and making more noise, because I've had the, because I had the audacity to say something on my Facebook page as a village trustee, that this is inappropriate and will be, will be handled, will be talked about. Moving forward, we can't handle that, we don't... Moving forward, we can't handle that. We don't want our, our, um, what was it? Uh, community members deciding what they are going to tear up our roads, which we are not totally responsible for. That's a town function. I've already had, I've already spoken to Edward, Edward Hammond about what to do about that parking lot. Or you can have those two parking spots actually belong to the, to the van. And they force us to, to the town to do something about them if they can actually be fixed. Or if they're just gonna wait till they wear out.
There's no excuse. In any event, where you come and you damage people's property or municipal property.
Yep.
You know, the call I got today was from a woman from Rafflin.
That chair.
Can you let, let the trustee finish and then I'll?
And the, the quote unquote was a lawless smith in your town. That's the impression that an outsider has, and, and a person that grew up here too. It's disappointing.
It's not a situation that we take lightly in any sense of the word, and we are absolutely enforcing. If we see people drag racing, if we see people, um, burning out, they're stopped, they're ticketed.
You not see the failures of your police officers, not doing anything?
From what I have gathered from the officers that were there that night, that they were, they had a difficult situation in the parking lot itself there, um, trying to deal with the people that were there. That, that's.
But prior to that, I would take, I, I would take a serious look at the pictures and the videos that you're, you're gonna see evidence that your police officers prior to that point were, were witness to the act. And didn't.
Didn't take action.
Didn't take action. And that, to me, that's someone not doing their job. That's more than duty, actually. Right? They're a little duty, they're a little something to do to me.
Well, I mean, it, it, like the officer on, uh, the post on School Street at, at Acton Street. Uh, he had, and I discussed this with him, that we saw the vehicles that were acting out. Um, he had pedestrians there that he was having issues with keeping them back. Uh, other vehicles that were trying to, uh, come in from the south and from School Street that weren't involved in this. And it, I said, could you pull them over? Could you stop the vehicles that were doing it? And he said, not safely for himself, well, pedestrians there, that he couldn't. There was one vehicle in particular that he had seen acting this way, uh, and he was not able to do that on a foot post at that point in time. And it, it was a fluid situation that, um, that got out of hand, um, badly. And we know that. And.
I'll be honest with you. I don't think it got out of hand. I think the police officers got it out of hand. Yeah, that's, I mean, it was led by the police department. It was. You know, that's, that's, that's the office that most people are looking at now. Just to let you know what, what their representation of that night reflects on not only the village, the village police department, also reflects on the fire department too. However, the fire department was smart enough to break off when it started to happen and put the truck back on the bike. Yeah, the first one. The last one, but, but knew what was going on. And well, attended and.
Wanted to register.
Yes.
Um, if I may, Mr. Georgia.
Please. My ignorance, when there's parade permit issue, pays the cost of the police officers is the question. And then shortly, I'll give you the follow-up. Why shouldn't the, if they don't, why shouldn't the applicant be paying something for public safety? Why shouldn't it be the chief determination based on his experience, the nature of the community, the time of day, many variables? How many officers he needs to call in? Those officers should be paid for, in my opinion, by the parade permit. There's a good chance it looks to me from budgets, it's gonna be less police on duty next year than there are this year. So who, who pays for public protection, if you will?
Yep. What's the answer that you have? You know, that's the.
I don't know. So in the parade permit guideline, pretty easy to look this up. Um, for the parade permit, the applicant pays, sorry, the applicant, the applicant, the applicant would pay.
But the payment is never commensurate with anything you saw out there.
There was, there was, there was, there was no permit, so there was no five dollar.
Right.
Yes, it's inevitable. But the applicant would pay for any services that were needed to be ran. Yes, right?
Yeah, but that's all moved now.
Just like the alumni parade. Alumni Association Parade pays for the police to close the streets, to do all of that work.
I don't believe it at all. Just like a house closing.
That's everything.
You put money in escrow. Why shouldn't the chief determine what he thinks?
Needs.
It should cost, and then take one point five, one and a half, put it in account. And they get returned, you get returned what he does not have to spend. Just a thought, but it, it seems like it wasn't to the chief carefully. Seems to me he's thoughtful, he cares, he's interested, but things just get out of hand. Rarely, I think, but these things will happen.
Yeah.
And the town cannot pick this up, especially if you're cutting budgets. Pays for services, good old concept.
The, the Alumni Association pays for, uh, the dance where there are officers. Um, but the parade itself, uh, it just.
Isn't no, it's considered a contribution of the village portion to that event.
Right.
So only the dance do they pay.
I don't remember voting.
I don't think we did either. But that's what it's been, it's been best practice for years, something worth considering.
We would have to, but you have to look at it.
Okay, look at it.
Ways, yeah, ages ago. So we've never voted on that, on charging for parade services and so on and so forth. And then, and the alumni parade. It's worth bringing open, but it's been going on that way for many.
We've discussed it in relation to other events such as old home days. And I think there's a couple others that I remember correctly. But so it's, you know, it's not that it can't be brought up.
We, and we, and I think we should, especially since now it's been the tool till September twenty fifth.
And we know, there was a time, I believe in the history, if I remember correctly, that the board decided on the permit. And it changed over some time because of expediency or streamlining the process to where it went to its management or administrative. If you read the ordinance, the board has the authority and in the board's speed, the manager can, and that is it. Now, the manager in the past has also allowed the chief of police to approve that just out of expediency. Because they're doing the, uh, organization for it and, and needs to do the event work. However, it's the board's authority to approve or not approve.
Right, so we'll, we'll get it on the agenda.
That's why I bring it up because I hate giving them any authority. And that's the way I am. I've been here then. Until this, until this point, I didn't mind having the, the manager consult us and have the authority to do it, but after this point, I don't know.
Exactly, yeah.
I don't know that we're, that the proper details were followed anymore and that it's just kind of do what we want. Yeah. Another point, another deficiency in leadership.
This is definitely a, a learning curve for all of us. Um, there is one more item on the agenda.
Deb?
That's, yes.
With this, I'm a better person. Of the ordinance committee and looking over this and making sure, because there is an argument to say this can be tiered. Very small and very rigorous within both. Plus, I could see us just signing off, but the larger things such as this do need trustee review approval.
Yes, that's true. I mean, it wouldn't be.
Can we remain to that group?
But only so that they can review it, although I believe it's been reviewed and we thought it was fine, but.
Not, not anymore.
Not more.
Okay, so we bring something new to the trustees.
To the ordinance and now forget it here.
Are you all amenable to that?
And we'll bring it down.
To an extent, depending on what the criteria of the, someone requesting the event, you know.
I can't predict the ordinance committee. They might very well say, oh, we're never gonna let trustees, well, sign off on this.
I'm gonna tell you my impression of committees, that we appoint, we have, they're purely advisory to the board. The board makes the final decision, agree. Uh, I, I don't wanna, I'm not gonna fence with you, John, Chuck, but I had this conversation with the previous administration as to, you know, uh, what the committees do and what the board. And again, I'm not willing to relinquish any authority. And this is probably, for lack of a better example, an example.
That's what's.
There's no dialogue between us. Um, you would get a, a more professional, well-thought-out, this is our best option. You could look at both and, and be, you know, better prepared. And whatever you choose to do with that.
All the information i- is, is certainly welcome. The more information, they make a better decision. But I've sat here, I sat on the select board too, where I heard in reference to revolving loan fund, well, you know, committee said this, you guys did that. Well, you know what? Um, maybe there was a reason. Great, yeah.
Okay, um, there, so, a- again, we don't relinquish any, no, we get a recommendation, we're gonna say no to that. Um, there is another item on the agenda. It's the personnel rules, but I don't know if anyone was ready to do that because this is sort of not an emergency, but kind of an emergency. And we only have, um, till six o'clock to vacate our room.
Next meeting.
Okay, so we should push it off to the next meeting on the June meeting for the trustees to deal with. Make sure you read those, see what, um, what we're going to agree to because the town and village have to sign off on this, on that. Um, there was one thing I meant to add to the agenda, uh, which I did not, which is a brief executive session, um, for the purpose of, um, oh, God, where would it be? It's the employment one.
Personnel or.
It's, yeah, the appointment, the appointment or employment, would that be one of them? Point of employment or graduation. It's just, it's very Greek. I doubt we'll take any action, but we need to say, but the village trustees need to hear something that we need, we need to take action on. They need to take action. And that would be with the, without the trust, the, excuse me, without the manager, interim manager, acting manager, and without the finance director. We just need about ten minutes.
Yeah.
Do I make a motion?
Sure, I'll go ahead and make an ocean.
And I know I'll get spanked by the Secretary of State for not adding it correctly, but.
Is, is what it is, um, in these times. I'll make the motion that the board of trustees enter into an executive session to discuss the appointment or evaluation of a public officer or employee. Where premature general knowledge may clearly place the municipality at a disadvantage. Uh, the public body would make it, or must make a final decision or in an open meeting, explain its reasons for the decision under, uh, one VSA three thirteen A and three.
Can I just say a second?
Right.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, please say a five by saying aye.
Aye.